Good morning and welcome to the And welcome to the Board of Commissioners meeting. It's Tuesday, March 11th. And I'd like to call this meeting to order and we will start with our invocation and pledge. All right, we have Dr. John Lee Peterson, Jr., the Senior Pastor with Chosen Generation Ministries.
Greetings to the Board, the Commissioners, our CEO of our county, Rockdale County Board, Commissioners, everyone in their respective places. Let's bow our heads in prayer.
Thank you.
As we approach the throne of God. Heavenly Father, in the name of Jesus, we come to you and we ask your wisdom. Lord, as we've assembled in this place today, we ask for divine guidance and divine wisdom of our Board, of our Commissioners, of our CEO, and all of our elected officials and all of our residents. Lord, we are assembled here today and we need answers. We are living in a time of perplexity and uncertainty. But Lord, your divine wisdom, your divine grace, and your divine glory will give us direction. As we are assembled here, we invoke your presence in this place, God, that we, whatever decisions made, whatever we do, we yield it to you, Lord, that we would do it for your glory and honor and for the service and the love of each other. Bless us this day as we assemble in this place and we ask all of these blessings in the name of Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we have a special recognition from our purchasing, for Purchasing Month proclamation. Director.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Thank you for recognizing Purchasing Month. We have our purchasing team from Finance. This is our manager, Tina Malone, for purchasing and procurement with the team. We thank them for everything they do. They make sure that contracts are monitored and put through with legal guidance, as well as all purchasing and procurement is done to standards of Rockdale County. Ms. Malone?
I'd like to introduce the team again. I'm Tina Malone, Procurement Manager. F. Shavanda Ellis, she is the Administrative Operations Coordinator. Shawriese Bailey, she is our Contract Specialist. She handles contracts and also all the purchase orders.
If y'all want to come up front so the audience can see you, that'd be great. Don't be shy.
Then we have Adrian Brown. She's our procurement buyer. She handles all the bids, RFPs. And we have Dawn Loody, who is a Contract Specialist, and she handles the contracts that, for instance, you will see on the agenda today. So I'd like to say thank you to the Board, first of all, for the support. I've been here going on 15 years and I really appreciate all the support that I've received over the years on the Board and is the support of procurement. And also, we'd like to thank the CFO for her support. So, thank you.
And at this time, I have a proclamation to read for you. If y'all want to come up here, I know that Ms. Memes will, Director Memes will get a picture in just a minute. Whereas, public procurement plays a significant role in the efficiency and effectiveness of both government and business. And whereas, procurement professionals add value to organizations through their day-to-day operations of purchasing goods and services, managing contracts, and enhancing procurement strategies. And whereas, procurement professionals nationwide influence U.S. economic conditions with their cumulative purchasing power running into the billions of dollars. And whereas, the Procurement Division of Finance in Rockdale County is committed to providing high caliber, strategic, logistical, and operational support to all departments within the Rockdale County Government. And whereas, Rockdale County's Procurement Division recognizes, supports, and practices the public procurement values and guiding principles established by the National Institute of Governmental Purchasing as fundamental tenets of the public procurement profession. And whereas, NIGP has proclaimed the month of March as Purchasing Month to recognize purchasing professionals and inform the public about the vital role they play in business, industry, and government. Now, therefore, we, the members of the Board of Commissioners of Rockdale County, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2025 as Purchasing Month in Rockdale County and invite all citizens to join in us in recognizing the role of the purchasing and materials management profession within business, industry, and government. In witness whereof, we have here and to set our hands and cause the official CEO of Rockdale County to be affixed on this 11th day of March 2025. Sign, Chair Janice Van Ness, Commissioner Post 1, Toanya Smith, Commissioner Post 2, Doreen Williams. Okay, we also have a presentation from Technology Services this morning about our new Rockdale County mobile app, which is going to be called The Rock.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Post 1. Good morning, Post 2. Hopefully, you all are doing well this morning. Good morning, Rockdale. We recently launched, in Technology Services Department, we recently launched the Rock GA app. I'm excited to introduce to you, The Rock GA. It's a brand-new mobile app designed to put the county services right at everyone's fingertips. This project began over a year ago and is a way to provide the citizens with a mobile platform for their convenience. Built on the trusted GoGov platform, The Rock GA makes it easier than ever to connect with the Rockdale County Government. Whether you need to submit a service request, pay a bill, or stay informed about county events, this app is a one-stop shop. When you access the app, next slide, please. When you access the app, you land here with a listing of county services and departments. Next, please. The header of the app shows a depiction of the new justice and administration complex, which, like the app, is a nod to Rockdale's future. As seen here, also, the citizens can review job openings and access information for county departments. Next slide, please. One of the key features of The Rock GA is a comprehensive county directory. There's actually a video here. Well, one of the key features is a comprehensive county directory. And it gives you quick access to the department's contacts, the office locations, and essential county resources, all in one place. Citizens will also have the ability to submit requests for services to applicable departments. And this is just one of many of the features that the citizens will be able to take. And then another feature that they have there, like, for example, if they click on Parks and Recreation, well, here you'll see in the video where it's actually pulling up the page for the Board of Commissioners. And if you click on each of those, it'll give information about your offices. And also, those are the list of parks and services throughout the county. And if you, if the citizen clicks on the Parks and Recreation, we have 360 videos of all of the parks and facilities throughout the counties. This is something that's also available on the county website for Parks and Recreation. And if the citizen sees something and they would like to report it, all they need to do is take out their smartphone, take a picture, submit it in the CRM in order to report whatever it is they would like their sighting. If you see something, say something, report it so that we may assist the citizens in addressing the issues. And this, again, is a listing of all of the services. So all of your services and features that you have on the county website, they will now have it in the palm of their hand on the app. Next slide, please. We're committed to making the county services more accessible and efficient for you. So please, just go to your App Store, download The Rock GA today. It's either in the iOS App Store or your Google Play App Store, and you can experience the convenience of having the Rockdale County Government in the palm of your hand. Thank you.
Thank you. Great work to the technology. All right. This morning, I would like to make an amendment to the agenda schedule and move Item 2025-129 to the top of the agenda. And following that, we will have Public Comment. And after Public Comment, we'll have a vote on that item.
So the motion would be to amend the agenda to have Item 129 be heard right now.
Correct.
And then go into Public Comment and then revisit 129 again. Is that correct?
So I move to approve the amended agenda to move Item 129 to the top. And then, and then vote on it. The discussion will be first and then the vote will be?
No. Then person, then comment, public comment, and then the vote.
Okay. When are we voting on 129?
After Public Comment.
Oh, right after Public Comment.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. All right. So that's what I, that's my motion.
It's great. Got it? Perfect.
A second.
Okay.
Yeah, second emotion.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. So we will begin with Item 2025-129.
Yes, correct. And I'll go ahead and read the heading and then I'm going to pass out an amended resolution for you to view, listen to Public Comment, we'll pick it back up. So the first item is Item 2025-129, a resolution to provide to impose a moratorium on zonings, rezonings, site plans, and plat approvals, subdivisions of land, and land disturbance permits, and building permits for a period not to exceed 180 days while Rockdale County considers changes to its Unified Development Ordinance to provide for the purpose of the moratorium, to provide for findings of fact imposition of moratorium, the duration of the moratorium, to provide for an appeal process, to provide for severability, to provide a penalty, to provide an effective date of this resolution, and for other purposes. And Madam Chair, while you go into Public Comment, I will hand these out.
Okay. So before we start Public Comment, Director Rutledge, I wanted to actually talk about this since we've moved our meetings to be, it's a working meeting, so we will have more dialogue than you may be accustomed to at some commission meetings. But that'll be us talking through these, through this resolution and working on changes if they're needed. So I know the intent of the moratorium is, has been something that not only the citizens have talked about for a long time, but our interest is making sure that during the Unified Development Ordinance process, that we have time to really analyze and make sure that we're doing the best job possible for our community and that we develop the best use of our land use plan and we're able to actually stick to it. So earlier in the year, I did have a developers' meeting and briefly talked about this coming down the pipeline. We want to definitely respect our business community, but also have a tighter hold on what our land use map will look like moving forward. So for that matter, I thank people for their engagement regarding this issue. We definitely want to make sure that Rockdale moves toward in the most thoughtful way. So there will be some changes to this resolution that we're going to talk about now. And then we'll hear from you during Public Comment. So it's going to be beneficial that when you do speak for Public Comment, especially about this issue, that your comments are thoughtful and could affect change. So.
So I would like to walk the Board through some of the bigger points that were considered as we were putting together this resolution and this moratorium as we get ready for a major rewrite. So I want to be very clear that the first important piece is that if you are currently going through the process, if you have preliminary plat, you have a final plat, you have a rezoning, you have a permit, a building permit, that is not going to affect you. And we have expounded upon that language this morning to make sure that everyone is aware of that. And if the Board would like to turn to Page 3, Section 2, A through E, it explains in further detail that what I was just talking about, how if you're going through that process right now, whether you have filed an application, you're substantially complete, this will not apply to you and your plats and your permits. The other thing that was added is a proposed effective date, which would be March the 14th, close of business, which is this Friday. Would you like me to pause? Just want to restate that again. The effective date has been proposed of this Friday, March the 14th.
Okay. Thank you very much. Can we make the screen show what we see?
So I don't think that this draft is going to be up on the website. You're talking about the actual resolution?
Right.
Yeah.
Even if you scroll to what was proposed so that we can, the public can see the?
Are you able to click on the link? Here.
Thank you for your patience this morning. We're getting there.
It's a true working session. This is transparency at its best, so.
In the essence of time, why don't we start on Page 3 where some of those changes start? And I think you mentioned the first one, which was Section 2, Item C?
I did. So Item C is the effective date, which would be Friday, March 14th, close of business. The other thing I think is worth noting, again, since some were getting settled when we were talking about it, is that this does not affect people who are currently going through the process. Whether you have filed an application, you have a building permit, you have a plat, you have a preliminary plat, a rezoning, you will not be affected by this moratorium.
Were there any additional changes?
The only other additional change is that there is an appeal process that has now been built in because, as we know, moratoriums are not neat and clean. When you press pause, you have no idea what could get caught up in the moratorium. So we have an appeals process that is built in. If you feel as if your application, your permit, or something like that has been caught up in this process, you will be able to file an appeal.
Okay. All right. Very good.
Anything else you have?
I think that's it. Any questions? Do you have any questions? All right. Then we'll move to Public Comment. So if you have filled out a yellow form, I'll be calling the people who have one completed. If you have not completed one during this time, you're welcome to go to the lobby and fill one out. And so at this time, we'll go ahead and get started. All right. Dr. John Lee Peterson, Sr., did you want to speak again?
I just wanted to.
You can come to the podium, please.
Greetings. I've had the opportunity to meet with the Commissioners already, have the opportunity to meet with you, CEO. To just introduce myself to everyone in the community. I've been a resident of Rockdale County for 17 years and God just bestowed upon me the start of ministry, a plant of ministry here in Rockdale County. And we have planted that ministry here. We're having an open house to open to the community and to just build our community. I believe now is the time, if ever there was a time for us to come together and be able to build together our communities, it's now in the face of what we are seeing happening nationally and all around the world. We're going to really need each other. We're going to need the support of each other. And so I believe that for a time such as this, God has allowed us to plant a ministry here to be able to build our community together and to just go forth and be able to do what He's called us to do. So I'm humbling at present. I greet all, everyone, and I look forward to seeing everyone. I'll be out in the community, working together with 501(c)(3) is a nonprofit organization so we can build Rockdale County, so that we can be bigger, better, and stronger. God bless you.
Thank you. All right. First, we have Chris Recker.
Good morning. Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Madam Chair. What I wanted to speak on is a moratorium. And just to clarify on that, if we have a platted community, can we still pull building permits?
Yes. According to this resolution, yes. It's already been platted, correct?
Yes. So any builders that have platted communities can continue to pull building permits throughout the duration of the project.
That's correct.
Okay. That's it. Thank you. I appreciate you letting me speak. It just wasn't so clear in here. I just wanted to confirm that. I have a lot of others that are with me as well that want to do the same thing.
And really, in the essence of your time, which is also valuable, we want to make sure that we are a responsive government. Our intent is really to allow us the time to be thoughtful about the process for the Unified Development Ordinance. And so we think this gets us closer, closer to achieving the goal while we're working through the UDO changes that will be coming. But I'm sure you're going to build a beautiful community for residents of Rockdale. And I will say, this Board loves amenity packages with subdivisions, so there's that.
And we have that.
Okay, great. Where is your subdivision?
It's off Fairview Road.
Okay.
So it's, we just started. We have single-family and townhome community in there, and we have a pool, a cabana, walking trails.
Excellent. Well, thank you for being a partner in Rockdale.
Thanks for giving me the time to speak. I appreciate it.
All right. Very good. All right, we have Ms. Josie Dean.
How y'all ladies doing?
Hello.
Great.
Yeah. It's ladies' month, so I'm glad to see all y'all ladies. I'm hoping y'all got some compassion for the citizens because we have not been having compassion for our citizens and what happened to us. I live 1524 Flatshores Road, Conyers, Georgia, Southwest. I have a lake behind my house, LC Palmer. And Ms. Palmer had the lake dug up when the county and the city said that it was private property, that all the sand was coming on the property, but it was a sand then. So they had everything dug up, rebuilt, put new pipes, put new everything in there. Less than seven years later, sand up to here now. The county came and they fixed the house next to me, which is private property, which my neighbor jointed this, but they came through his property, fixed his property, put all the barriers up there, rocks, everything in there, stopped at my property. I don't know whether it was an ars and espy thing, or I'm mad with Josie Dean, nothing happens at her house. But I pay Stone Water. That's what Stone Water's supposed to do. The way my lake is, is no way the soot that I got in there now comes from just natural causes. So they try to say it was a neighbor up the street, it's coming through here, the man on the corner, his whole lake don't dry it up. It's not with sand. It's with dirt. So it's not coming from there. Then they try to say it's the man next door who they fixed lake. It's not coming from there because the water's not going to go through there and come. That was a lie. So yesterday, I went and I went to Stone Waters and got the manager and took the manager over there to see it for himself. They had, he had no idea that that hole was that big. I went to the city. I came to the county last year. You was the one here. Showing them the danger across from that, right there on the corner of Johnson Road and Flatshores, it was a ditch so big that a cock can fall through there. So when the county, city found out that it could get sued for it, they came and covered it up a little bit, but it's still there. So when you, when the Stone Water man came yesterday, he said, nobody never told him that. So it's coming from there over to there to my land. And I'm, I'm black. When the white people had, they had to deal with, I ain't paying all this money for my property, for me not to enjoy my lake, not on my beans, because if it was on me, I wouldn't have never came to y'all with this problem. But that's $20,000 I don't have. And it's coming from the city and the county from y'all building, all that stuff, all them houses, it's too much to be building in this. It's too much to be building in this little bit of county, to gotta go somewhere. So when the rain, all of that stuff coming in my house. So y'all be blessed.
Thank you. All right, we have Jeff. Thank you, Ms. Dean. We have Jeff Webster.
I'm here in regards to the new mill rate, and I know it's not from y'all, but it's from the previous administration. I'm a senior, 62, living on a fixed income. And when I got my new bill for this quarter coming up, I was shocked. I talked to some of my neighbors and other neighbors that are seniors. They're actually having to sell their houses when this new bill comes out. I know y'all's new agenda. Each one of y'all, I read your pages, for helping the citizens of Rockdale. And what I'm asking you is if y'all would take a look at the bill and see if you could reassess it, throw it out, or something, adjust it. I don't know if y'all got a letter from me, so I brought a copy of it just in case. But all the neighbors I talked to, when the new bill came out and they made the public announcement, it was never issued with the tax bills. Nobody knew about it. So I read that, and it just came out in June. We didn't know about it.
Right.
So what we're asking is y'all's help to review this, maybe save some citizens from having to move.
Thank you.
So especially me. I just bought my house in 2020. It's foreclosure, bad shape, so I've been fixing it up ever since. And this new thing, my income went up, or my house payments went up 400 bucks, but my income went down. So I didn't think it was fair, and I want y'all to look into it, see if y'all correct the problem. So, but I brought a copy for each of y'all. Let's see. This is what I wrote.
Thank you.
So y'all been reviewing. My information's out here.
Thank you.
And hopefully we come up with a resolution.
Thank you. We're working hard on that.
All right. Thank you.
I appreciate it. Goodbye. Next, we have Ms. Danielle Waters.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Commissioners. I'm Danielle Waters, owner of Conyers Walkin Clinic. Just right, or I wanted to express some concerns regarding elimination of the EOB or EBO position, which is the Equal Business Opportunity Position in Rockdale County. I'm a little disappointed because I am a small business owner. I've had my business for approximately 11 years, and these, the procurements that were set in place were, have the potential to really help me to expand my business, and I feel like I'm now at a great disadvantage. And so I really wanted to put some concern, and that was held by Stacy Bonner Lewis. She was really working with me closely to look at procurement opportunities, and I just hope that doesn't get missed, or, you know, that there's complete elimination. And I think it needs, it needs to be looked at, at her position being put in place, because it's invaluable to small business owners in this community. So I appreciate you.
And I apologize you've gotten incorrect information. So our finance director, can you address that, and then I'll follow that up with our HR Director, Tony Holmes?
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. There is a policy and ordinance in place for the equitable business opportunities here at Rockdale County, and that will still be in place.
Correct. And what is the, and Madam Clerk, you may want to hone in on this. Currently, the policy states it's for contracts over what amount?
$100,000.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. So that position only deals with the contracts over $100,000, correct?
That is correct.
And then, right now, for the, for the administration building, as well as for the courthouse, how are we compliant with that?
So for that project, they actually, McCarthy Barnesley has a position on board, the construction manager, that is handling all of that. So they are currently ahead of all the goals within our EBO policy. At the last check, about three or four months ago, they were at 22%, and our requirement for the policy is 15. So they actually have a dedicated person that's doing that for that major project. We required that in the, since it was such a large investment for the county.
And one of the challenges with the ordinance is that the ordinance doesn't specify that it's going to help local businesses thrive that fit under that category. So therefore, there's not really the teeth in it that people may think there is. It actually could be anybody from across the country that could apply for contracts over $100,000. So our first contract that we've had since July of last year, when the position came into existence, is actually the contract for our, which is with the collaborative firm, and that is for the rewrite of our Unified Development Ordinance, correct?
That is correct, yes.
And you'll also have a designated person in your office that will still meet that expectation of an EBO element to their position, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And our Chamber of Commerce, the county, has also worked with them in the past to do a doing business with Rockdale County, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And we've presented there and given businesses an equal opportunity to learn how to do business with our organization?
Yes, that is correct.
All right. And when I came to your office not long ago and got a copy of the list of businesses that have been on the, that have been created since, I think, July of last year, when the position came into existence, that list that I received from you and shared with Sue Sanders had about a page and a half of businesses, correct?
That's correct. That's the database, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
So that, are you talking about new businesses created since we adopted the policy?
Since that position's been in existence, I asked for the list of businesses that were registered on the list. And it was only a page and a half. So I know that our chamber, we work, you know, the chamber's a very active part of our business community. So they have lists of all their businesses. So we have other mechanisms to be able to work with and do business with a lot of the local businesses, which is really what my interest is, is making sure that our business community thrives. And so I've met with Director MEMS in planning, I mean, in public relations, and we've already talked about having more events so that businesses could continue to meet with the Small Business Development Council every Wednesday. They're actually, they have a representative named Ryan that comes every Wednesday to the chamber. In addition, we would invite our partners at the city and the school board and other businesses to come and meet the very businesses that are right here in their community to help engage with them and hopefully help grow their businesses. Okay? Thanks.
So, so my concern with that is that we are missing that opportunity to provide some personal services, as she just mentioned, that Stacy has been working directly with her, that if you turn it over to just a department or another organization, those personal touches get lost in the middle of it. I personally, I, I am opposed to eliminating that position. I believe that we have worked really hard in this county to expand the opportunities for minority-owned businesses, for women-owned businesses, for veteran-owned businesses. I feel like if, if the concern is that we are not reach, we are expanding our reach out to other communities and states and that kind of thing, then we just need to make a little change in the wording of that, that we are reflect, that we are concentrating on businesses here in Rockdale County. But I just wanted on the record that I am totally opposed to eliminating this position.
Well, again, the position will be given to someone else in the office, who will be that person that keeps those, the list of businesses that are under.
So we're hiring somebody else to handle that?
No, they're already on staff, and they work with our businesses now for different projects, the procurement division. So Director Holmes, would you like to address this?
So while, while she's coming up.
Yeah.
I just got to say that people are already working a lot, and there's, I don't know anybody who can just say, okay, let's just throw this at them and throw this at them. We're seeing this at the federal level, and we know that it's, it's going to have a ripple effect down the road, that people are, are losing jobs, and that they, that work is done by someone. Now, if there's a process that needs to be looked at to make sure that everybody's got plenty of work and is doing it, then I think we can look at that. But I don't think we should just say we eliminate a position.
Well, it was definitely with great thought that I proposed that, and in my opinion, the, the citizens have cried about the increase in taxes. So many jobs were added over the last couple of years, and the citizens have spoken. They cannot afford these continued bills. And at the end of the day, that's who I work for up here, and I think that's our call, is to listen to the citizens and be responsive.
I think we also have a responsibility, though. By eliminating this position, that might be $5 at the most off somebody's yearly tax bill? That's, that is nothing compared to the services that are being provided.
Well, I think if you get a copy of that list, maybe you can go through it like I did, and you'll understand a little bit better.
Well, I could use more information. But, but I do have a question. By eliminating this position, that's a board action. Is that correct?
Correct.
The entire board, or at least two people, have to agree to eliminate that position? Okay.
That is correct.
Director.
Thank you. Madam Chair, Commissioner, so yes, we did take a look at the policy as well as the ordinance, and one of the things as part of the review is that the program itself, we would continue to be in compliance with the program, with the existing staffing that we do have in place. So that was part of the review. So the programs that are in place, required, we would ensure that we would maintain compliance with those programs.
Thank you.
Again, we lose the personal touch when we just turn it over to another department or another entity like the chamber that have already got a million things to do. We heard from procurement this morning that every person on that team has a role and a position. Now, so are we asking them to work more hours? Or are we, I, I just don't get it.
So I feel confident in our chamber and their development with small businesses, and we cannot be the answer for all things in this community. As a government, we have certain responsibilities, and again, back to the financial piece, this is not the only position that has been looked at and assessed.
And Madam Commissioner, we will definitely provide the list for you.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
You know, economic development is huge for the county. Huge, because that's where our taxes can be offset by businesses coming in. So we eliminate the opportunity for business owners to increase their taxes, increase their contributions. That does lower, that lowers the, the people who own homes.
All right. All right. We have Tina Olmer.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you so much for allowing me to speak today, Chairman Van Ness and other esteemed members. I'm here on behalf of, to speak to you on behalf of the moratorium. As you all are aware, that's going to affect a lot of people, a lot of people. I have one question, though, before I get started, and that is, if we have an LDP that has been approved, will that be caught up in the moratorium?
No. Not the way this is written, because you've started the process and are already in the process, so it won't affect your LDP.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you so much for giving us this opportunity. I do want you to know that I'm here with Green River Builders, and I'm going to ask them to just stand for a moment to show you how important this is, and how many families that this really could affect if the moratorium stops the building and new construction. We do know that you need to get a grasp on new construction or building in the county, and we just would ask that you respectfully overlook this in its entirety and make sure that it doesn't affect layoffs and businesses. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. We have Bridget Benito.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. To our chair and to our other commissioners, and to everybody that's here. I would like to just follow up a little bit on the Equal Business Opportunity Program. I know that we just had a conversation about it, and I think that there's a lot more to it that people are missing. Me personally, I am a small business owner. I'm an award-winning real estate broker. I've been in business for almost 20 years, and I have offices located here in Old Town. I also own a cleaning company, residential and commercial, and I am a smaller business owner, because there's nothing small about my business, so I don't say small business. And Stacy, and this position, has been very instrumental to me. It has presented opportunities that I do not believe I would have otherwise been able to be a part of. And it's the things like the classes, it's the seminars, it's the sit-down and show you how to navigate, how to maneuver. It's the collaborative efforts of the people that were brought in to help us, smaller business owners, to experience things that we just would not have known about. Now, I've been a member of the chamber for about 10 years. I'm on the governing board for the chamber. I'm an ambassador chair. I do a lot with the chamber, and I appreciate everything that they do. But even with that involvement, I did not know about some of the things that this Equal Business Opportunity Program provided me. And I think that there are a lot of people here, not in this particular meeting, who should have been here to represent for this, because this is really, really important. So I'm asking that we reassess this program, that maybe we dig deeper into it to find out what it really entails. I have a presentation here that I actually went over, and to see everything here, I still didn't know all of these great opportunities were present for me to take advantage of. So I'm encouraging other people to take a look at this. Right? There are people that are still calling about the classes that were scheduled that are now, you know, probably up in the air or not going to take place now. And people continue, up until this morning at 7:30, I got a call about a class that was coming up that I told them was no longer going to take place, and the question was posed to me, why? And that's not my job to explain why. It's not here. I would rather explain why we're continuing it, why we're going to move forward with it, and why it is just, I don't know. It's, it's almost like a great disappointment to see that this has been eliminated. So I would just ask you guys, as the board, as the, as the commissioners, to just take some time and reexamine what we have here. And if you could do that, and you find it in your heart to continue this program, you'd be doing a lot of small businesses or smaller businesses a favor by reexamining this. And I'm going to miss the program. The classes that we had scheduled, we had them scheduled all the way out, and they're all in my planner, because I am a planner, and I would love to see this put back in place. And if I could help do anything to make it happen, whatever that could be, I'm willing to do that. But this is, this is instrumental to us that don't make a lot of the millions, you know, who are, I mean, I will by next year, but right now.
That's right.
You know, right now, I'm just saying, it was just, it's, it's beneficial. So please, just give it an opportunity to take a look at it. Equal business opportunities is the, is the key.
And are you doing business with a county now?
I am, I have an opportunity for it, and it was, it's a great opportunity. I didn't know that there were certain things I would need to be able to secure that, and I went to Stacy's office, and she sat down and showed me what I needed to do, and I did that, and I had, I've been contacted by a major opportunity that I knew nothing about until I sat down at her office.
And does it have to do with our courthouse or administrative building?
It actually has to do with a jail.
Okay.
So that was, that's a great opportunity.
So did you know that we have a procurement office?
I, I've heard. I've heard about that. Now, I'm going to be honest with you, Janice. I don't know very much beyond what I've learned and dealt with Stacy about. Because I didn't know anything about it until Because I didn't know anything about it until Stacy.
Right.
So I, I have more that I could probably look into, but it was so much easier when someone showed up at all the meetings that I'm at and said, hey, you need to do this, you need to do that, there's a class we have coming up, there's this, there's that. And a lot of people are not members of the Chamber. A lot of people don't know about these other opportunities, other places. But I know what I know. I know Stacy is at every meeting that I'm at, every networking event, I know she's there. I know she's handing out flyers and telling you what, what's coming up and you have to be there. You know, you're missing out by not doing this. So she's pulling and pulling and pulling. It's up to people whether they take advantage of it or not. But the opportunities that she's presenting to us, we don't, we, we've not known about. So I can look into things a lot more.
Well, this is a new administration and definitely I think that you've seen both of us at many Chamber events and different things. So, you know, our goal and is definitely to continue to grow our business community, be responsible to the community, the citizens, the businesses who have told us even today, there has to be some relief from the tax burden that's been placed on them. And so if our budget last year, when people were screaming, was $111 million, can you imagine that it's $123 million this year that was set by the last Board? It's not sustainable. So please understand that for me, and I can only speak for myself, I have concerns. This is not the only position that's been looked at. But we have, we, I am fully committed to making sure, just as we said earlier, that the responsibilities and the intent will still be at a part, a part of Rockdale County. But we have serious decisions that are very, very hard to make as a Board. And we have to be responsible to the taxpayers who cannot, while it's great that your business and other businesses can pay their bills, not everybody, as we heard today, can afford to do that. And I'm empathetic to that as well.
Right, and I, and I understand that. I'm not, I'm not speaking anything against that.
Right.
And there are a lot of people that are struggling. I get that. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not a stranger to a struggle.
Right.
Right? And as a smaller business owner, that's why it's even more important to me that opportunities are presented where I don't have to struggle.
Right.
So there have been days when I've got, when I, when I get my tax bill and I'm like, wow, like, that's a lot, right? And I have clients who get their tax bill and want to know why last year was this and why this year it's that. I get all of that. My thing is to not take away from those of us who do struggle by the opportunities that we're presented with as smaller business owners. And I know you have to cut your budget and I know all of that's important. And I have the utmost respect for every one of you ladies sitting up here. And at the same time, maybe, I don't know what your budgets are, maybe there's something else that can be cut and so it doesn't cut us out.
So understand, in the state of Georgia, do you know how, how many EBO officers there are?
Nope, sure don't.
Bolton and DeKalb and us. So, anyway, let me go on to the next speaker. I just wanted to share that with you.
Okay, well, I appreciate you ladies' time and we'll keep it moving.
Thanks, Bridget. All right, next we have Stacy Luhrer Bon, Louis Bon, Stacy Bonner Lewis, sorry, my apologies.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners, Post One and Post Two. I just wanted to come down and just say a couple of words because you had mentioned the EBO program and you had talked about how many businesses were on the database. And just to let everybody know, this program is new. It started, I launched it in June internally and externally I launched it in July. I've had several seminars of the website I created. If you go to rockdalecountyga.gov, you can go to the EBO website and you can see what the ordinance is and the policy. And the policy and the ordinance, Chairman, you're correct, is only saying procurement opportunities over 100,000 goods and services, right? So when there are opportunities, goods and services over 100,000, I make sure that I send out those summaries to City of Atlanta, different organizations that deal with small businesses so that they can send it out. And I also posted as well to let people know there are EBO opportunities out there. That's something that I do. And then I said, well, what else can I do? Because I got the latitude from the previous Board of Commissioners to develop this whole program. So besides just the 100,000 that you mentioned, that's the EBO policy and ordinance, what else can the EBO officer do? So I created the database and the SBA, SBE and the Hub Database has 51 businesses on there. And the businesses are all small businesses and I'm promoting businesses saying, hey, if you want to do work with small businesses, check out our database. And it also has their capability statements is on there as well. So I wanted to let you know that as well as for everybody else to aware the capability statements are out there. And that's what they do. A capability statement is just like a resume, right? But it tells you what the businesses can do. And then also the database from Bridget Benito's business to Danielle Waters. It's a variety of businesses on there. And it's for Rockdale County in general, not just the government, but employees and, and the community. There are individuals on that website that are Conyers based, but the program is for Rockdale County as well as the Atlanta metropolitan area. So there are a lot of small businesses that have contacted me that are outside of Rockdale, but there's some also on. A lot of people that come to the seminars. Some of them, the tax seminar that I did, the seminar this month that's being canceled for next week, like Bridget said, I'm still getting RSVPs. It's for the Women's Certification, which that has to be canceled. Grant Writing Seminar.
When is it scheduled for?
It's March 19th. And I was told to cease and desist all activities last Friday. So I've been contacting everybody and canceling all that. I was told to cease and desist. Grant Writing, and I'll, and I'll take my seat, Grant Writing was for next, not next month, which I have already canceled as well. So there are a lot of trainings, seminars, the database, the presentations, all of that stuff is still out on the website. So if anybody wants to go to it, it is rockdalecountyga.gov, Equal Business Opportunity Division, and it's under the Finance Department. So the program is new, but it has continuously been developed and given opportunities for small business. And I will just say that for Bridget, it was for the Sheriff's Department. It was not for the new complex. But they were looking for, there was a prime bidder looking to do business with a subprime. And they checked out the database and they actually contacted two of the individuals on that database to see if they could be a part of the bid process, which is with procurement. So I work closely with procurement. So I just wanted to come down and if you had any other questions about the program and like you said, the Chamber of Commerce, I am an ambassador with the Chamber of Commerce and I also go out and meet all the small businesses that are in the city of Conyers or Rockdale County and introduce the EBO program as well as brainstorm and work with them about how they can be profitable and grow their business. So I just want to let you know definitely, because we have not been able to talk about how much value I'm giving to the, the small businesses. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, at this time, we will, I'd like to get a motion for item 2025-129.
So Madam Chair and Commissioners, if I might interrupt again. If, when you consider your motion for this resolution, if you could move to approve the resolution subject to final approval by the county attorney?
That would be good. Do you want to just go over those amendments real quickly for the audience?
Okay, so just to recap briefly again, this is about the resolution for the moratorium. This will not affect anything that's already in process, to be specific, plat, building permits, LDP, that kind of thing. The effective date would be March 14th, close of business. And there is an appeals process built into this resolution.
So I move to approve this resolution with the amendments just mentioned, subject to the county attorney's approval.
I second that motion. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Do we want to have some discussion first?
Yes, any other comments? My apologies.
Yeah, I would like to comment for just a minute because this is something that has been, we have talked about for well over a year and the need for it. Because things have changed. Rockdale County is no longer just a suburban county. It is, it has rural parts, it has suburban parts, but it also has urban features. And we learned that, those definitions last week when we were in, in Washington DC at the NACO Conference. Our, these UDOs were established about 20 years ago and our county has vastly changed since then. And so I think the only way to really get a handle on it is to kind of slow everything down and, and just really do a deep dive into what we're doing. It's an inconvenience, but I think everybody has felt this tension of things moving very quickly. And I think it's just, I think we just need to slow this down just a little bit.
Okay. Commissioner Smith? Okay. All right.
We voted, we approved.
And the motion carries.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
All right. Now, we are item number six, Approval of the Minutes for February 25th, 2025. I'll, I'll pause right here to let you guys go back to work. All right, we'll move forward with the Approval of the Minutes.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the minutes as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 The motion carries. Unfinished business?
All right, well, we lost our crowd. So, okay, so item 2025-62 is with LexisNexis Risk Solutions to the Sheriff's Office. We've had a request for the Sheriff's Office to remove this item from the agenda.
So I move to remove this item from the agenda at the Sheriff's Office request. Madam Chair, I second the motion.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries.
Okay, that brings us to new business. The first one is 2025-96, Construction Materials Services CMS through the Transportation Department. This is for material sampling and testing. SPOS number five, roadway rehabilitation, full depth, full depth reclamation in an amount not to exceed $15,000. This is for six months and it's SPOS-funded. This is a budgeted item.
Madam Chair, I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries.
Item 2025-97 is with Construction Materials Services CMS through the Transportation Department for preliminary pavement evaluation in an amount not to exceed $14,900. This is for six months. This is SPOS-funded and a budgeted item.
I move to approve the contract as presented.
Madam Chair, I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, the motion carries.
So Madam Chair and Commissioners, item 2025-98 through, let's see, 2025-102. These are all chemical contracts. So what I could do, I could read them and you could take them collectively if you would like.
Collectively?
Yes, in one motion if you would like to. And I will try to channel my high school chemistry class and make sure I can pronounce these. Here we go. Item 2025-98 is with Univar Solutions USA through the Water Resources Department. This is for chemical supply contract for sodium chloride solar salt. The amount was .114 per pound and that's an annual amount of $136,800. That's an estimated. The previous cost was at .115 per pound. This is for year one with two 12-month renewal options. This is through the Water Enterprise Fund and is a budgeted item.
So are we, are we saying that the cost went down?
Yeah, I know. Some are down and some are, they put out an RFP, another bid, and when it came back, it was cheaper. I know.
Great.
Isn't that awesome?
Yes.
That's worth noting.
Yes.
So when you put it back out, sometimes, yeah, you're, you're right. Okay, so item 2025-99 is also with Univar Solutions USA through the Water Resources Department for chemical supply contract for hydrofluoric acid. And the amount is at .225 per pound, which is a $40,950 per year estimated. The previous cost was .274 per pound, one year, with two 12-month renewal options. This is the Water Enterprise Fund and is a budgeted item. Item 2025-100 is with Chemtrade Chemicals US LLC through the Water Resources Department for chemical supply contract for polyaluminum chloride. The amount is .25 cents per pound and it's $180,000 per year estimated. The previous cost was .233 per pound. This is one year with two 12-month renewal options. This is through the Water Enterprise Fund and is a budgeted item. Item 2025-101 is with Chemrite Incorporated through the Water Resources Department. This is for the chemical supply contract for sodium permanganate. And this is amount $1 and .016 per pound. And it's an estimated annual amount of $77,724. The previous cost was $1.83 per pound. This is for one year with two 12-month renewal options. This is the Water Enterprise Fund and is a budgeted item. And then item 2025-102, this is for AquaSmart Incorporated through the Water Resources Department for chemical supply contract for polyblend orthophosphate. And the amount is 56 cents per pound with a $101,920 per year estimate, estimated amount. The previous year was .9848 per pound. This is for one year with two 12-month renewal options. This is a Water Enterprise Fund and is a budgeted item. So if the Board would like to take items 2025-98 through item 2025-102 collectively.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve contracts 2025-98 through 2025-102 as presented.
And I second that motion. Some of these are a lot less.
Right.
This is awesome.
I'll put an exclamation point on your vote, so.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries.
Item 2025-103 is with United States Department of the Interior through the US Geological Survey for Water Resources Department for the Long-Term Monitoring Program. The amount is $247,200 per year. The previous amount was $254,000 per year. The term is January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2025. This is through the Water Resource, Water Enterprise Fund and is a budgeted item.
So I move to approve this contract also as presented. Madam Chair, I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions?
So what, what is it about water that we're getting all of these lower costs?
Yes, go ahead.
It's probably the excellent leadership.
Probably so.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. So that's exactly right. Part of this is excellent leadership.
He's not going to miss a moment.
I knew that answer.
No, no, no.
Well, and, 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 and it's, 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 it's the market, right? When you, and have more contributors, competitors to the market, things become more competitive. QT's not going to keep charging gas at a certain rate if Shell lowers theirs. That's part of it. And of course, part of it is our excellent leadership. Mr. Vernoy Murray down there at a water treatment plant is doing a phenomenal job down there with he and his staff. This other one, this last one that you see before you for the USG- This other one, this last one that you see before you for the USGS, actually, the federal government did some funds matching. And so, the contract really didn't go down. It went up, but they matched and gave a $20,000 match as they sometimes do. So it allowed our obligation to be about $7,000 less than it would have normally been from last year. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Item 2025 dash 104 is with Comprehensive Family Care through the Juvenile Court. This is for drug court substance use treatment group. It's the amount of $225 per group through September 30th, 2025 with option to renew two additional 12-month periods. This is grant funded and is a budgeted item.
Madam Chair, I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item 2025 dash 105 is a requisition through the General Services Department for United Maintenance. This is for Costly Mill Event Hall Expansion to relocate five existing AC split systems. It's a unit price contract from Contract 2024 dash 19. The amount is $19,646. This is SPOS and impact fee, impact fee funded and is a budgeted item.
So I move to approve this requisition as presented.
Madam Chair, I second the motion.
I have a motion in a second. Any questions?
Yes, what, what expansion are we talking about at Costly Mill?
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. The Costly Mill Event, Event Center, when we built it a little while ago, we hadn't programmed anything in there. And over the years, the caterers that have come have had some difficulty because there's only one entrance. There are emergency exits and entrances, but there's one, only one entrance on the front of the building. So they've had difficulty accessing it or moving around during the events. That was one element. And the second part of it was the need for additional storage to set up and take down and move things around within the building, especially when it was raining. So the, it's just a simple 10-foot addition on the back of the building. And it's just a simple lean to. The, the issue with this particular contract is all the air conditioning units were on the back of the building. So, and there's a swale that goes around the back of it. So this contract is to remove those, put them on top of the roof of the, of the new addition, and then add another small air conditioning unit onto it.
Thank you.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Okay, item 2025 dash 106 is a requisition through Technology Services Department for DYSIS Solutions. This is to upgrade the data centers to include purchase, install, and the computer programming. The amount is $104,776.98. This is a state contract vendor. This is ARPA and CIP funded. This is also budgeted.
Madam Chair, I move to approve this requisition as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries.
Item 2025 dash 107 is a requisition through the Technology Services Department for DYSIS Solution for a Cisco Firewall. The amount is $122,798.84. This is a state contract vendor. This is CIP funded and is a budgeted item.
I move to approve this requisition as presented.
Madam Chair, I second the motion.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item 2025 dash 108 is a requisition through Technology Services for DYSIS Solutions for DSI Professional Service for the implementing and migration of DC. The amount is $86,000. This is a state contract vendor. This is through General Fund and a budgeted item.
They're getting a lot of money from us. Madam Chair, I move to approve this requisition as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item 2025 dash 109 is a requisition through EMA for Priority Dispatch. This is Pro QA Fire and Law Enforcement CAD modules. This is the annual maintenance for EMS, fire, and law enforcement. The amount is $29,400. The term is March 14th, 2025 through March 14th, 2026. This is through the Emergency 911 Telephone Fund and is a budgeted item.
I move to approve this requisition as presented.
Madam Chair, I second that motion.
I have a motion in a second. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. Madam, Madam Clerk, may I ask that we, with permission of the Board, that we look at consolidating the next several Water Resources items?
Yes, absolutely.
I think that would take us to item 2025 dash 118.
Okay. Is the board, are you all good?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay.
Then we will start with item 2025 dash 110. That's a requisition through the Water Resources Department for Pro Fence LLC. This is the On Call Unit Price Contract 2024 dash 30. This is for the fencing at the Randy Pointer Reservoir. The amount is $57,250.53. This is through the Water Enterprise Fund and is a budgeted item. Item 2025 dash 111 is a requisition through the Water Resources Department for the Southeastern Agro Systems. This is for parts and supplies used for maintaining and making repairs to systems at various parts of the water treatment plant processes. The amount is $15,000. This is through the Water Enterprise Fund and is a budgeted item. Item 2025 dash 112 is a requisition through the Water Resources Department. This is for Southeastern Industrial Plastics for 2025 expenses for parts and supplies used for maintaining the plant, making repairs to piping around the plant, and installation of new pumps and systems. Not to exceed $15,000. This is through the Water Enterprise Fund and is a budgeted item. Item 2025 dash 113 is a requisition through the Water Resources Department for Fisher Scientific. This is for 2025 expenses for supplies used in the labs by water quality techs and for collecting water samples for testing. This is an amount not to exceed $15,000. This is through the Water Enterprise Fund and is a budgeted item. Item 2025 dash 114 is a requisition through the Water Resources Department. This is for Grainger, 2025 expenses for supplies to help upkeep of the plant systems around the plant and pump stations. It's in an amount not to exceed $15,000. This is through the Water Enterprise Fund and is a budgeted item. Item 2025 dash 115 is a requisition through the Water Resources Department for EcoTech. This is parts and supplies used for maintaining the plant and making repairs to pumps and valves, et cetera. Not to exceed $20,000. This is through the Water Enterprise Fund and is a budgeted item. Item 2025 dash 116 is a requisition through the Water Resources Department for IDEXX Laboratories for 2025 laboratory supplies used to test the water at the water treatment plant in an amount not to exceed $16,000. This is through the Water Enterprise Fund and is a budgeted item. Item 2025 dash 117 is a requisition through the Water Resources Department for USA Blue Book for 2025 laboratory and safety supplies in an amount not to exceed $16,000. This is through the Water Enterprise Fund and is a budgeted item. Item 2025 dash 118 is a requisition through the Water Resources Department for Hack Company for 2025 expenses for supplies used in the labs to test the water treat, treated at the water treatment plant. Not to exceed $42,000. This is Water Enterprise Fund and budgeted item. And members of the Board, the Water Resources Department should be stocked up by now.
Okay.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the requisitions 2025 dash 110, 2025, 25 dash 111, 2025 dash 112, 2025 dash 113, 2025 dash 114, 2025 dash 115, 2025 dash 116, 2025 dash 117, 2025 dash 118 as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion in a second. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item 2025 dash 119 is a requisition through Parks and Recreation Department for Pinnacle Maintenance. This is for park landscaping maintenance. It's a renewal for December 2024 through December 2025. The amount is $51,842.76. This is through the General Fund and is a budgeted item.
I move to approve this requisition as presented.
I second that motion, Madam Chair.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries.
Item 2025 dash 120 is an expenditure request for Zoho through the Technology Services Department for ma, to manage engine subscription for, to manage the engine subscription fee for the software. The amount is $20,840. This is a renewal for February 2025 through March 2026. This is through the General Fund and is a budgeted item.
Madam Chair, I move to approve this expenditure requested as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion in a second. Are there any questions? Nope. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item 2025 dash 121 is an expenditure request for Formulitics LLC through the Sheriff's Office. This is to investigate, and this is for investigative and intelligence software. The amount is $38,877. The term is January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2025. This is grant funded and a budgeted item.
I move to approve this expenditure request as presented.
Madam Chair, I second that motion.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item 2025 dash 122 is an expenditure request through OpenGov. This is through the RDOT Department for OMS user and OMS Plus software. The amount is $25,657.12. The term is January 16th, 2025 through January 15th, 2026. This is through the General Fund and is a budgeted item.
Madam Chair, I move to approve this expenditure request as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item 2025 dash 123 is a request for surplus of equipment from the Stormwater Department, the Sheriff's Office, the Transportation Department, and Water Resources Department.
I move to declare these items as surplus as presented.
Madam Chair, I second that motion.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item 2025 dash 124 is a resolution reactivating the Keep Conyers Rockdale Beautiful Council.
Yay.
I know, right? Madam Chair, I move to approve this resi, resolution as presented.
I second the motion.
I have a motion in a second. I did want to make, if you all have any questions, please let me know. But I did want to say how excited I am about having this reactivated and working with citizens in the community and Commissioner Smith. That is going to be a fantastic committee and I can't wait to see all the great engagement pieces to it, so.
Absolutely.
I have a motion in a second. Are, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Item 2025 dash 125 is a resolution creating the Rockdale County Water, Sewerage, and Stormwater Advisory Council.
I move to approve this resolution as presented.
Madam Chair, I second that motion.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
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 All right, item 2025 dash 126 are volunteer appointments. A is the Rockdale County Board of Adjustment. We have two appointments for you this morning. Margaret Wright, which would be the term of March 2025 through February 2029. And Michael Mixon, which is a term March 2025 through February 2029. B, we have the Keep Conyers Rockdale Beautiful Council. There will be eight appointments. And C, the Rockdale County Water, Sewerage, and Stormwater Advisory Council. There will be seven appointments. My recommendation this morning is that the Board adopt the two appointments for the Board of Adjustment. But you defer B and C. We sent out a press release last Friday asking for applications and to try to get people who might be interested in serving on the KCRB and the Water, Sewerage, and Stormwater Advisory Council.
All right, Madam Chair, I move to approve the volunteer appointments for 126A, which is the Board of Adjustment as presented. And to defer items 126B and 126C until the next regularly scheduled Board of Commission meeting.
I second the motion.
All right, I have a motion in a second. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Okay, item 2025 dash 127 is a requisition through the Fire Rescue Department for North America Fire Equipment for Turnout Gear. The amount is $85,575. This is through the General Fund and is a budgeted item and is submitted for ratification.
I move to ratify this requisition as presented.
Madam Chair, I second the motion.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. Now, on to the favorite part of the day.
Yes, absolutely.
Yay.
Okay, I will read as we have our director approach. So item 2025 dash 128 are two appointments. One is the Fire Chief for Fire Rescue, Chief James Robinson. This will be submitted for ratification. B is the Director of Planning and Development, LaShawn Gardner, also submitted for ratification.
Okay. Before you guys vote, I definitely would like to share some information and definitely, um, some background information about our two appointments. So I'm going to start with Chief James Robinson, also known as Chief Jimmy Robinson. Chief Robinson comes to us with over 21 years of service to the fire and EMS profession. He is currently serving as our interim Chief of Fire Rescue. He possesses certifications in firefighting, paramedicine, chief fire officer, fire inspections, and fire investigations. He was named the 2022 State of Georgia Chief Officer of the Year by the Georgia Association of Fire Chiefs. In addition to serving at Rockdale County since 2008, Chief Robinson has also served in Social Circle, Walton County. He served at DeCap Technical College as an instructor and the city of Covington. He holds an Associate's Degree in Fire Science, a Bachelor of Science Degree in Fire Administration. He's currently working on his second Bachelor's Degree in Fire Protection Engineering, while at the same time, he's also working on his Master's of Science Degree in Public Safety Administration. I want to invite up Chief Robinson, our Fire Chief, so come on up, Chief Jimmy Robinson.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm truly honored by your trust in me to serve as the new Fire Chief of Rockdale County and Rockdale County Fire Rescue. I want to thank the Board of Commissioners for this opportunity. Your confidence in my leadership means a great deal. It really does. And I promised to uphold the highest standards of service and professionalism. As we move forward, my focus will be to enhance public safety, strengthening community, community relations, and leading with transparency and accountability. Together, we'll build Rockdale County Fire Rescue to a new level. Thank you again for this incredible honor, and I look forward to working with all of you.
Very good. Thank you. We're excited.
All right, do we take the votes individually or we take them together, A and B?
Take them together today.
Okay. All right. And again, he drove back here. He's at a training class, so he definitely wanted to be here for today. So we definitely appreciate that. All right, the next appointment is our Director of Planning and Development, and that is Ms. LaShawn Gardner. And she's sitting here to our right, so new face. LaShawn comes to us with over 20 years of experience in planning and development. She has served in several leadership roles, including a community development planner, city planner, senior research policy and management analyst, senior strategic planner with the collaborative firm where she worked on projects with Clayton County. She also was a planning and community development director with the city of Forest Park, where she worked, served for over five years there. She has worked with several municipalities, including the city of Atlanta, where she worked with over nine years there for the city of Atlanta. She has also worked with Union City as well as Fayetteville. Ms. Gardner, who has achieved multiple professional level development accolades and affiliations. She is a member of the American Planning Association, the Georgia Planning Association. She holds a BA in communication studies with a minor in urban studies. She also has a Master's of Urban and Regional Planning with a specialization in community and development housing. So I text her today and I told her that she was going to be on the microphone. So since she's new to Rockdale County, I'm going to have her come on up here. And she's going to have a few comments as well. So Director Gardner is what we call you here now in Rockdale County, so come on up.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners in Post 1 and Post 2. I am elated to be here with Rockdale County as Director Holmes has mentioned. My experience spans over 20 years, specialty in planning, urban and regional development, community housing, community development and housing. I also have experience Um, I also have experience in grants administration, um, with federal grants, such my specialty was with HUD, um, technical assistance for federal grants, as well as policy and research analysis. Um, I've served on the land bank board with Clayton County, a city of Forest Park representative, and I've also secured over $10 million of grant funds for the city of Forest Park. Um, so one of my, some of the things that I look forward to is serving with integrity, transparency, and moving the plan is, planning department forward.
Excellent. We welcome you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, that concludes the appointments for today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Madam Chair, I move to ratify these wonderful appointments as presented.
And I wholeheartedly second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Thank you.
All right. We are down to board comment.
We are, yes. And first, um, Commissioner Smith?
All right. Well, um, thank you so much for, um, the opportunity to speak today. Um, we did attend, um, the NACO convention, but I'll let, um, Commissioner Williams elaborate on that today, since we were there together. Um, I yield to her. But this week also, the Georgia Recreation and Parks Association state tournament was held here in Rockdale County at our gyms, our basketball gyms. It was for boys. Um, and this event, um, of course, was an economic boost for our local restaurants and hotels and gas stations. Um, and I want to thank the Park and Recreation, um, Department for positioning Rockdale County to host this event, and I also asked, um, Director, um, interim Director, um, Tahara to come up to elaborate on that and let us know how we got to that point.
Good morning. How are you all doing? Excellent. Um, thank you for coming out again, Commissioner Smith. It was a great opportunity, but this is our first time hosting that GRPA tournament, and it was for 14 U and 17 U boys in the state of Georgia. We had over 15 teams, um, represented in the tournament, coming from 10 counties and cities across Georgia. So, it was a great exposure to our community and, like you said, a great economic development. Um, in addition to that, we had over 3,000, um, visitors who came through our doors, through the gate. So, we were able to raise a good amount of money at the gate. So, I just want to give a big shout out to my team for the tireless efforts. It was all day Friday evening, all day Saturday. So, shout out to Parks and Recreation for specializing and being professional and providing a good service, not only to our internal customers, but our new visitors to Rockdale County. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for the job you're doing. I appreciate it.
Absolutely. And that, before I conclude, I would like to leave a, um, quote, "Progress is impossible without change." Thank you.
That was good.
Okay. So, um, I have several things. One, I did, I have, I did attend the National Association of Counties, um, conference last week in Washington DC, and, um, I sit on the, the, uh, Health Steering Committee, which, uh, excuse me, which, um, looks at a whole lot of different areas of health in the United States, and is specifically, of course, with policy, and then reaching out to, um, our congressional leaders. So, a couple of things really, um, stuck out to me. Um, one of the speakers talked about the fact that if tax cuts happen, it's not likely to happen on Social Security or Medicare, but it's likely to affect Medicaid. And the comment was, that money that's lost federally will need to be made up from higher state and local taxes. I think people don't understand that there's certain services that are provided, and be, if you lose some in one place, it picks it up in another in order to provide those services. So, it's not always just a cut in one tax, it affects the others. Um, another comment was, another discussion was about improving the quality of home health aid workers. This is all tied into immigration, it's tied into Medicaid, um, and the fact that with some of the new immigration policies, we will lose home health aid workers. They are, it is already a very difficult job, um, for many clients. They need tremendous physical health, help from their aides. That is not easy to do. It's like many, um, career opportunities, it's an aging, uh, population of people who are doing these kinds of jobs. Um, and so, there was, there was a big discussion on improving opportunities for home health workers, and of course, since we have one at our house, um, I'm intimately connected with that and, and how important the services are that they provide, and how we need to just, at this point, just be aware of what's happening and what, um, while it doesn't necessarily affect us in the county and, and our budget, I think it's a, it's a national issue, probably a global issue. Um, so, that was interesting. Um, there is, um, what's called the Fox Grant Funding. It was named after a veteran who, um, died by suicide, and it, it is to increase funding for mental health and for community-based care, and they, they are targeting veter- veterans at risk for suicide. Veterans commit suicide at the rate of 17 every day, much higher than the, the general population. And so, some of the other conversations and notes that I have, have a lot to do with dealing with, um, support services for our veterans. Um, while PTSD and some of the associated issues with our Vietnam vets, even our Korean vets, were not known at the time or talked about, they are very prominent now with our, our Gulf War veterans, who are, have come home with PTSD, and they have also come home with traumatic brain injuries that, not so much in the previous wars. Um, so, a lot of emphasis on our veterans, uh, veterans, and, um, I, my goal is to, to do a little research, I thought of this this morning and haven't had time to look yet, to find out exactly how many veterans are living in Rockdale County, and, um, kind of assess, well, what is it that they need most? Many of them don't get their services from the VA, some of them do. Along with that, we had an opportunity as the Georgia delegation to, um, meet individually with, uh, the new Veterans Affairs Secretary, who was previously a congressman from the state of Georgia, Doug Collins, and, um, while he was sympathetic to the needs of veterans and their concerns, his conversation with the gen- general audience when he spoke at the larger, um, convent, uh, uh, arena was simply, we're making cuts. And so, while I talked to a physician yesterday, or Sunday, who du- has done some work at the Veterans Administration here in Atlanta, talked about some of the processes are very slow and are not efficient. I think that's where the emphasis needs to be, is on the efficiency and maybe changing those processes. Um, okay, then the, probably the most exciting thing for me, because I sit on the, um, Arts and Culture Commission also, was the discussion about America 250. I don't know how many of you were even alive in so- in 1976, when we celebrated the bicentennial of the United States, but now it is the 250th, I think, I can't even remember what they call that name, but, um, it, two years ago, Congress, um, charged w- this commission with having multiple activities and events to take place in 2026. And so, we have one year. Um, it is the largest, uh, grassroots com- community-driven project ever. It's a public-private partnership. It is the largest caucus in Congress, and it's obviously very bipartisan. Um, in, next month, they will have a master calendar launched on the website, and it will have an interactive map of different events going on around the United States. The honorary co-chairs of this event are the, the Bushes, George W. Bush and his, his wife, his First Lady, and the Obamas. So, again, it's a very bipartisan event to celebrate the democracy and the growth and the, of the United States. They're calling it the movement, and they call it that because, um, they have a whole lot of different areas of focus for this whole year. One of them is called America's Field Trip, and this is for students grades three through 12, and I sent all of this information to our school board members to, um, see if they can initiate something within our schools. They, um, part of it is the American story, and that's people telling their specific stories and immigration stories and all of that. Another part is America gives. There are two main days of service in the United States. One is MLK Day, and the other is 9/11 Day. And so, they, they want to initiate and coordinate with those two days to have days of service. Um, they have an America Innovators Project, which is a traveling tech expo to show all of the different possibilities and the inventiveness of our country. America's soundtrack will highlight American art forms, there will be America's performance, and there will be American waves, which will be to have, um, create American flags, and at the same time, across the country, wave those flags, students and, as well as, as families and adults. And they have an emphasis on engaging our active military service and veterans. So, I am super excited about that. I understand that Public Relations is taking that on as a project for Rockdale County. I think there's such, so many ways that we can celebrate our country, celebrate Rockdale, and our participation in that. I'm really excited about that. Um, there's lots more. I have lots more notes, but I will not go through all of them.
Well, PR has a little video put together of the NACO conference with our own Director Moore Jackson narrating, so, uh.
Okay.
Just a little snippet.
Coming to NACO was an outstanding opportunity to learn from, speak with, collaborate, form bonds and friendship with CIOs of some of the largest counties in the entire country. The NACO conference gives us a unique opportunity for the research to be completed on a national level and then packaged and given to us individually. This is an outstanding platform for networking, where counties come together, and it helps all of us to share information, so that none of us are reinventing the wheel.
All right. And then in closing, I just had a couple of comment.
Oh, I'm, I'm about to finish. Sorry. My apologies. That's all right. Um, I appreciate the Technology Department with their new app. Um, I did download it on one of my phones. I've got to do it on my other phone, but it is very well laid out and so much easier to navigate than the website, so I really appreciate that. Um, for the past number of years, we have celebrated the Rockin' Women in Rockdale Event, and where we honored remarkable women who have made significant contributions in our, in our county. And in celebration of Women's Appreciation Month, I would like to, to, um, spotlight the achievement of some of these incredible women in the next board meeting. So, what I'm asking is that if you have and know of any amazing women who deserve recognition, if you will send me their names and a brief description of their accomplishments, um, I will highlight some of them in our next board meeting. While we're wait for that community information, I wanted to share a little bit about my grandmother. Um, she kind of set the tone, I think, for the women in our family. She, um, she was married young, had three children. Her husband was, um, had an addiction to alcohol. She loved him. That was not common back in the 1920s and 30s. It was very uncommon for a woman to, to ask for a divorce, but she did. She raised those three children on her own. She had a career in the Pacific Telephone Company, that was the name of it at the time, um, and worked and invested very well, very wisely. She also, after she retired, um, she began to lose her eyesight with macular degeneration, but she could still see to drive, uh, dur- during the day, and so, uh, she would drive her friend who was legal, who was totally blind, and her, who was legally blind, to the bus stop where they would catch the bus to go do, um, classes and that kind of thing. She was a continual lifelong learner, and, um, I am going to be hanging in my office one of the pieces of stitchery that she did, um, it, la- later in her life after she retired. So, that, um, I think that history went, went down to my mother, and I think it's passed on to my sister and I, who are, you know, avid learners and participants of trying to do ev- you know, learn everything we can about the things we're interested in. So, congratulations to the women in Rockdale County. Now, I'm done.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Well, in honor of Women's History Month, I would like to just acknowledge this team and my colleagues for the history that we've made, um, working together. It's definitely significant, and I hope it is a, a great example to, um, young women in our community and beyond who may be interested in serving the public and, uh, making a difference in the world, so. Um, I also would like to acknowledge our fire marshal, who's been here today, Nick Lynn, in the audience. Thank you for being here. Um, and with that, um, I also want to mention that we have a tea on March 24th, and, um, Melissa Mims has been great to help coordinate that and has more information about it for those that would like to attend, and it will also be listed on our Facebook page, so, at Rockdale County, but thank you for your help with that. And, um, uh, Madam Clerk, at this time, with no other comments, I'd like to ask for an executive session for the matters of discussing personnel.
Okay. We could get a motion to do so? To move into exa- okay, so.
No, just kidding. Um.[1798.23]
Troublemaker.
Listen.
Sorry. Yeah, we're supposed to see that part. Um, Madam Chair, I motion to move to executive session.
For the purpose of discussing personnel.
For the purpose of discussing personnel.
I second.
You have litigation to that and your motion to.
Say it again. And litigation.
Okay.
For the purpose of discussing, discussing litigation and personnel.
Okay.
I second the motion.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. And, um, we'll be moving, uh, during this meeting, this time. Thank you, and have a great day.